Okay, my clock just turned six thirty. I see that we have a quorum, so I will call the meeting in the city council, city of Hillsborough to order. First item up on our agenda is approval of our consent agenda. We have five items under our consent agenda tonight. The first are vouchers totaling two hundred ninety-five thousand, eight hundred fifty-seven dollars and seven cents. Did everyone receive copies of the vouchers? Were there any questions regarding the vouchers? Next is minutes from the February sixth, twenty twenty-four meeting. Did everyone receive copies of the minutes? Were there any questions or corrections to the minutes?
We did have one correction to the minutes.
It was very minor. I had put at the top of the minutes as a special council meeting, but it was actually a regular council meeting, so just wanting to correct that.
Okay. Third, we have CDBG vouchers totaling ninety-five thousand, five hundred fifty-two dollars, forty-seven cents. Any questions regarding that? As we all know, that's a pass through for the childcare project. Fourth is a revised not-to-exceed cost for approved transformer purchase on two six twenty-four to one hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars. Mr. Styles?
Did math wrong on the sales tax, so that corrects that.
Okay. Any questions regarding that? Lastly, we have several library board appointments that we need to take care of. First, with terms to expire four thirty, twenty twenty-seven are Rachel Winter and Catherine Sabayan. Second, our terms to expire four thirty, twenty twenty-eight, which are Don Ratliff, Sean Ashui, and Alvin Het. Any questions regarding those appointments? Hearing none and accept a motion to approve the consent agenda submitted.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
No second.
We have a second. Councilman Wilkins, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is our first public comment opportunity. And do we have anybody here from the public that would like to make a comment at this time? I think everybody in the room is here for a specific agenda item. I don't see anybody but press online, so we'll close that opportunity and we'll move into item D, which is the, or should we skip item D? Sarge, come on in. So we are now getting the annual special law enforcement trust fund report, and we have to present that Sergeant John Hubert. Sergeant Hubert?
As part of our annual requirements, both by state legislation and by city ordinance, we report annually on our special law enforcement trust fund account and also on our asset forfeitures. So we have completed state mandated reporting to the KBI of all asset forfeitures, all proceeds and expenditures. And this year they added in a requirement, which I reported on last year, but they made it official in the state reporting. The, yeah, Lou, you're looking at it there. The, dealing with the payments from the ABC tax warrants for possession of controlled substances. That is now mandated that we report that because what they're finding is, is that we're all putting it into the special law enforcement trust fund. So just as far as keeping those two numbers separate, because they're accounted for separately, they went ahead and stated mandated it, the annual reporting to the state. So last year, we seized one thousand, uh, one thousand sixty-seven dollars and a vehicle, both in involving the same case. In that case, involved controlled substances, which is going to be the majority of what we will seize or forfeit vehicles for under state statute. We did not get rid of any assets this last year. Although now that we've been awarded, since, since this report, any pending forfeitures on the vehicles or on currency, everything has been resolved. All forfeitures have been awarded. And we're moving in the process of taking the two vehicles that we have and transitioning those into city property to be sold at government auction. Outside of that, nothing big has changed. We haven't made any purchases out of that fund this last year. And we maintain a balance of expendable funds of four thousand two hundred forty-five and seventy-eight cents.
Hey, any questions? Well, hearing none, I think we fulfilled our obligation. Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Thank you for being here. Okay. Next up, we have a proclamation declaring February seventeen through twenty-four, two thousand twenty-four is National FFA Week. And I would like to read the proclamation into the record, if I may. Whereas FFA and agricultural education provide a strong foundation for the youth of America and the future of food, fiber, and natural resource systems. And whereas FFA promotes premier leadership, personal growth, and career success amongst its members. And whereas agricultural education and FFA ensure a steady supply of young professionals to meet the growing needs in the science, business, and technology of agriculture. And whereas the FFA motto, learning to do, doing to learn, earning to live, living to serve, gives direction and purpose to these students who take an active role in succeeding in agricultural education. And whereas FFA promotes citizenship, volunteerism, patriotism, and cooperation, therefore, I do hereby designate the week of February seventeen to twenty-four, two thousand twenty-four, as National FFA Week in the city of Hillsborough. And we did present to the leadership, but if you'd like to come up, we can, you know, get a photo op again.
Why you don't have more kids with me?
All right. Now?
Here, I'm gonna put, sorry, I'm gonna put her.
There you go. Real scary, right? Thank you very much, guys. Appreciate all you do. All right, next we're into our business section of our agenda. First item under that is consideration of ordinance thirteen eighty-three, changing the zoning of five oh one South Main to R two, two-family dwelling from C five highway service district. Mr. Styles?
Thank you, sir. So the planning commission met on twenty-fifth of January and heard this case. We did all proper notifications for that. Sent letters, did everything on the, on the publication side. The owners of the property of five oh one South Main, L and H Properties, want to downzone this building from the CS District Highway Service District, which is kind of a leftover from when that was the highway, to an R two district, which is a more restrictive zoning, which would restrict to two-family dwellings. So essentially, you could build up to a duplex on that, so. At the public hearing, Mr. Avery Unruh was a neighbor to the south there, expressed some concerns about the property and its ownership. There's been some issues with sump pump drainage trees on the property, potential impact of it becoming residential, and I don't know if Mr. Unruh wants to add anything to the.
I was able to, I was able to meet with the property owner and discuss things with him and maybe work through some of my concerns, so. I think we'll be okay.
Okay. Mr. Unruh is the only one who came to speak on the, on the issue. So what the deal is with this is the, after, after we heard that, we talked about it. It's a, it's a more restrictive zoning classification, so when you talk about zoning, you know, with the CS district, that building could be used for many number of things, which would be probably inappropriate for that neighborhood. So moving it down to an R two is probably a, it's a more restrictive use, so it's more restrictive, less impact to the, to the residents around there, so. Kind of going along those thought, that thought process, the planning commission moved forward with the recommendation to this group that we do approve that zoning change for five oh one South Main. We don't, this staff doesn't have any objections to that, so we move that, or we recommend that that be, we move forward with adopting ordinance thirteen eighty-three, excuse me.
That's the former Cybo real estate building?
Cybo real estate, the most recently left the auction, yeah. So it's gonna be remodeled for housing.
So under the CS, they couldn't have had housing in there, or they could?
No, no, it wasn't. They did not allow for housing. It's one of the weird, kind of, it's commercials, you know, the, the highway service district is very strange in what it allows. Retail tire shops. Could have had a hotel there, but not residential specifically, so.
Sorry, I guess I'm showing my age.
You're right. You're right. It was.
I know. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, I'd consider a motion to adopt ordinance thirteen eighty-three, changing the zoning of five oh one South Main to R two, two-family dwelling from C five highway service district.
I'll make that motion.
Councilman Bye moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Driggers seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll pull the council. Councilman Bye?
Yes.
Councilman McCarty?
Yes.
Councilman Wilkins?
Yes.
Councilman Driggers?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance thirteen eighty-three is hereby adopted and the mayor will sign. Next item under business is consideration of contractual mowing contract for two thousand twenty-four. Mr. Styles?
Thank you, sir. So February, the city, or back in January, the city council authorized us to go and talk with Plinard Mowing, who did a lot of mowing for us last year under contract. And we negotiated those rates, and then we also had competitive bids we put out, published those, contacted all the bidders who bided last, bid out last year, and anybody else we had on our list for, who would be a mower. All of them pretty well declined except for Plinard Mowing Service, so I think Josh maybe has cornered the market on that, I'm not sure. We talked with Heffley specifically because he had two of our contracts last year, and he's completely out of the mowing business, so. We're kind of got it down to, to one, which I, you know, you always like to have more than one bid when you have these things come in. So you kind of wonder, well, is this gonna be competitive? So we took a look at what it was last year. I think that, looking at kind of what the bids that won last year, they, they're pretty consistent with the twenty-four bids, so I don't feel like they're, they're that far off. One of the things with having one person is that we'll have a pretty large contract with that one person. With Plinard Mowing, we had negotiated last year. They've always done the Scheffler House for us. Last year, we had them pick up the community plaza and splash pad around that. They helped us out with Memorial Park Museum and Fairgrounds when we didn't have a rec, rec director, who was kind of doing some of that stuff. We found that, you know, the hours that were being spent trying to maintain that were just not sustainable for us to do internally, especially with the labor problems that we have. And so we're recommending that we go for it, you know, continue having that contractual relationship with Plinard Mowing to continue those things. It's about twenty-four acres and high-profile areas that need to be mowed and maintained. And the real kicker with all those areas is the trimming. That takes a ton of time. And so, you know, we feel like it's probably a better investment to have contractual mowing than it is to, to try to bring that in-house and try to do it ourselves, so. And the anticipated cost is forty-four thousand dollars, which sounds really high, and it is. Last year, we spent thirty-one thousand, but we also didn't have, have Plinard Mowing doing the full season for us. They picked up basically in July, so. You know, from where we started with this conversation with mowing, contractual mowing a couple of years ago, we have brought some of that back into the city. We do the, maintain the airport, for example. We pulled all that back. We've taken some of the stuff off the list. Of course, we've sold some lots and kind of shrink the footprint a little bit. So it's, you know, we, we were trying to get it down to where it's manageable, and I feel like this is still a pretty good deal for us. You know, forty-one thousand is pretty high, so that could be a, a position, you know, a low-paid, a full-time position, just to mow. But we still don't think we have enough man-hours doing that to accomplish the job that we need to get done, so. What we're recommending is to move forward with the contract with Plinard Mowing. I may understand for any questions you might have on that.
Questions? I think the, in terms of the, the work product that we've experienced from Plinard Mowing, we've had really good results. And they do a really good job for us, so I'm comfortable that they will continue to do so. So, any other questions or comments?
Is he gonna have enough time to be able to do residential? Because I know he does. People's, I mean, people's personal property.
I assume so. That's his business. I don't know. I, I assume so, yeah.
That's my only.
Yeah, the, yeah, I mean, he's done, as the mayor said, he's done a great job for us, and just to step back for a second, this is only about twenty percent of what we maintain as a city. We have a ridiculous amount of property that we have to maintain, right-ofways, the highway right-ofways, lots of different places that we mow and maintain, the sewer legging. Things that we, you know, eighty percent of that we take care of with, with our own staff, but yeah, this, this twenty percent's pretty high profile. And so having somebody you can trust and having the man-hours to do it, I think is a good investment.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none and accept a motion to approve the contract for mowing for two thousand twenty-four to Plinard Mowing and Landkeep. Okay, Councilman McCarty moves. If you'd like a second. Councilman Wilkins seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is consideration of proposal to upgrade the golf clubhouse bathroom to ADA standards. And we have Mr. Unruh back tonight to hopefully present some numbers to us.
Yeah, I mean, it's not gonna take long. It's a pretty simple project, so the bathroom upstairs, as many of you know, we've been doing a remodel of, at the clubhouse. And we put a lot of time to, into the inside, trying to upgrade that, and things are starting to really come along and look pretty good, and so. The one thing that doesn't look so great and still pretty outdated and not up to code is our bathroom upstairs. So the plan is basically to bring that up to ADA, and there's currently a shower in that bathroom. Why? We're not sure. There's also carpet in the bathroom. Why? We're not sure. So the plan would basically, basically be to almost gut the, completely gut the bathroom. That'd be ripping out the current countertop, putting in a smaller vanity. The current countertop doesn't allow us to put in a bigger door, so that's why we have to take out the countertop, move the door out. One reason why this number's a little higher is because they have to move, well, cap plumbing for the shower and rip all that out, and then move some electrical to make that door bigger. And then there will be a little bit of plumbing that has to be moved. The toilet in that bathroom is too small, and the plumbing will have to be moved for it because it's too close up to the wall for us to put a bigger toilet in, so things like that. We have cut some costs, mainly being, there was, currently, we're using the shower as our chair storage, but we're trying to figure out how to continue to have somewhere to put our chairs, and so we thought about putting in some sort of small closet, but that was gonna add to this cost, and so we kind of decided we can do something to rack them on the wall rather than trying to build some sort of closet, and so. Yeah, things like that. We have, we actually have some leftover flooring as well from when we did the main two rooms in the kitchen. And so that form would be used in the bathroom as well, and so we have enough to finish that part, portion of the building. So we'd save some cost there as well, but yeah.
Questions?
Does this estimate include, I mean, fully up to date on ADA compliances and whatnot, but is that, do we have to have like handrails in the bathroom as well? Is that also covered?
Yes, yeah, everything, bringing it fully up to ADA standard is, is in that.
So probably the toilet has to be a little higher on the ground as well.
So after, that includes, it also includes the new toilet, so.
I wished I could have got my bathroom done for that.
Bathrooms are expensive. I was, I was pretty shocked by the number that came back because, but they, they're working with us. They, they really, the owner is actually a member or planning on joining at the, at the course, and so he really wants to help out around the course, and it's been awesome to work with him. Super quick. I don't know if you've seen, but they've already started on the deck. Out at the golf course, and tomorrow, I think they're starting to put up some, some joists and everything like that, so we're moving along pretty good with that project, too.
Hey, any other questions? Hearing none and accept a motion to approve the proposal to upgrade the golf clubhouse bathroom to ADA standards as submitted.
If I could add that it, we'd like to take it out of the local option sales tax.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Hey, we have a motion by Councilman Bye. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Drigger seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Last item under our business section is Hillsborough Ford invoices totaling one thousand five ninety-three fifty-five. Thank you, Avery.
Yeah, appreciate it, guys.
Yes, with this one, we have a couple oil changes. Looks like it's all lease-related. And then they did do some work. Window switch for fire department. Brakes. Handful, handful of things, I guess I should say. There's a whole list of all that kind of details, things that got broken down in that. Total cost was fifteen, or one thousand five hundred ninety-three dollars and fifty-five cents.
Any questions? Hearing none and accept a motion to approve payment of Hillsborough Ford invoices totaling one thousand five ninety-three fifty-five. Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second? Councilman Wilkins seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those abstaining?
Abstain.
Motion carries. The invoices will be paid. We'll now move into our discussion section. Mr. Styles, credit card fees.
Yeah, just to bring that back to you, we pulled some more data on that, so you could kind of take a look at how that breaks out, how we broke that down and kind of put some, a table there for you at the end and kind of see. We, we basically took months that were sort of indicative of high and low, once a quarter. Effectively, you can kind of tell where, where our transactions come from, and if you look at the amount, it ends up being somewhere between one and two percent, give or take, if you want to look at it from that perspective. Each of the, each of those types of transactions has different types of fees attached to them. So when it, when, if you were to do it like with, say, Square, it would be a transaction fee plus a percentage. That's usually how that works. Ours are a little bit different since we absorb those fees. You know, there's arguments on both sides of this, so I think that's where we're kind of at, you know, absorbing the fees, there's definitely a fairness argument there, like if, if only a handful of people, but really, we have a pretty good, fifty-eight percent of our customers are using some sort of credit card processing, either through digital check or, or an actual credit card, so it, you know, it's the majority of people who are doing it. And that's obviously significant amount of money. Thirty-four thousand dollars is not insignificant when you take a look at it. As a percentage, though, I mean, it's relatively low. You know, far less than what customers could get in the open market if we were to switch that. They would definitely be paying some transaction, per transaction fee plus a percentage, which, you know, the, some people would argue for the convenience that you should have to pay that. That's, that's really the argument with that. You know, we can, from, we're looking at, looking at it from an overall payment standpoint, I think that would reduce the number of payments that we get. We, you know, those, those we, that are using credit cards, a significant number, we know we're gonna collect on those. So there's a pretty high probability we're gonna get those. So you would presume if people were bringing in more checks or cash, well, not cash, but checks, you'd probably have more insufficient check returns, things like that, so there's gonna be some more legwork with that. And there's time and effort to be put into that, too. I think we'll have a lot of people complaining or, or, you know, at least bringing that up, and we're gonna have to do a lot of educating at the point of sale for that, so. There's definitely some time spent there. Slows down the process. People get upset. You know, people get upset when they have to pay fees. I get that, too. You know, considering all the non-monetary costs and everything else, continuing to absorb the fees, it doesn't, there's, there's, there's an argument there that we should maybe continue to do that, so. I'd be curious what you heard back from people. We didn't, I didn't get any comments that came in to me, but I'm sure you guys did.
Yes, there's time. I went and asked people around the city. This is the last meeting, and I got some charts here that I've made for everybody. So this first chart here, just to, the, the poll that I did can be obviously skewed. I didn't ask that many. I got around fifty people that I asked. And this first chart here is just showing what their opinions were. It shows that of the fifty that I asked, seventy-eight percent were fine passing that on to the consumer, so the ones that use the fee. And the second chart just breaks down. I also asked them how they pay, so just to get a breakdown of how they pay for, you know, I used utilities because when I asked Danielle, she said that was, yeah, the majority of it. And so the third chart there just shows a breakdown of the people that say that we should pass it on to the consumer. So I want to get a representation of those that, hey, you know, if you say that we should pass it on, let me get representation of how you pay, so that, that, you know, that can be skewed as well, because the people that don't pay with the credit card, they say, oh, well, yeah, go ahead, pass that on to the credit card user. But in that, I got around thirty-three percent of people that do pay with a card themselves. And that fourth chart there just shows that of the credit card users, they are fine with accepting the fee. They understand. I mean, I got a couple comments saying that, yeah, you know, I understand it's the convenience, and then a lot, a lot of people said, I do it for the cash back, so, you know. So essentially, it wouldn't necessarily be a complete break even because the processing fee would be more than they would get in cash back potentially, but a lot of them mentioned that they would probably either switch to something else or keep using the card and just take the fee in that. They would be fine with it, so that's just the consensus that I got. Like I said, it, it could be skewed towards that, but overall, it seems as if the majority of the city is fine with us passing it to the, to the credit card users, and the credit card users themselves are also fine accepting the fee, so. That's what I got.
Well done. Appreciate that. I did get one comment, and I'll read this into the record because I think it kind of follows along with what you found. This person said, I read in the paper about possibly raising rates, and so many use credit cards. I have mine automatically withdrawn from my checking account every month, which I should avoid extra fees charged to the city. I personally, which isn't true, I think there are still some fees involved with automatic withdrawal, is there not?
Yeah, there's still.
I personally don't feel my rate should be penalized because of credit card users, so I support assessing a fee only to those choosing to use credit cards. If rates are raised on all of us, then we might as well all use our credit cards to pay instead of the auto withdrawal I use.
So, I mean, I don't, I don't know if in, you know, these type of topics, if, you know, we can say how we might go about it, and then with the many time, if they want to come in and share their opinions, but you know, this overall consensus seems to be pass it on is what I saw.
Anybody else get any comments?
I mean, a lot of it was ones that, you know, mentioned their rate increase. They said, oh, you know, rates have gone up, you know, already, and so I don't want to so.
Go ahead. I was gonna say, I did have somebody ask me, they were confused. Is that just credit card? Or is that debit card also?
No, it's basically anything that you use through that portal. So if you, yeah, debit cards, they get carded a little differently, but the fee would probably be the same.
So for instance, when I pay my, my electric bill, I use, I go through the portal and I use my debit card.
Yep.
So there would be a fee if, okay.
Okay, so it would just be anything through the portal.
Pretty much, yeah, anything that's digital would be.
That's what I thought it was.
E-cash, ACH, all of it would be. Unless you're writing a check or. Unless you're writing a check or.
Okay, so.
My first thought, which I didn't have this kind of information in front of me, was to push till November when we were already gonna. Analyze that and possibly break it out as a fee then, but not. Not feel like we were adding another financial burden after we just did November.
Sure. That's a fair point, yeah. I would say if you were gonna do an increase, it wouldn't, um, it would be very small if you were gonna try to do it on the utility side because it's. One to two percent and in actual dollars, it's a pretty very small, uh, it would be, but. Yeah, I mean, I I think it's really more an argument about fairness than it is about.
Yeah.
About the cost. So.
And and that fifty-eight percent is higher than I thought you'd say.
Yeah, that's. We have a lot of people who use that online stuff. Um, we've got, we, it's, uh. How many accounts do we have on there now? It's like nineteen-hundred or something like that, but nah, I can't be right.
Uh, isn't it nine?
Nine-hundred something, yeah, because we have, we have about eleven-hundred utility counts, give or take.
So. Is it fair to say that those that don't use some automated uh form of payment? Send in a check or come to the window and pay cash?
Or come to the window and pay by card or. Or debit card or credit card, would that would be a fee on that then as well?
Right, right.
They're in person.
So I guess my point is it costs us more to handle the transactions. Of those that don't use automated payment, correct?
It does, yeah. We've been able to keep keep our number of positions down because a lot of people have moved that way. And so we do save money from that perspective too. Now, is it a direct offset? I don't know that, I don't know if I could say that exactly without doing a lot more work on it.
Well, but if you're talking about. Under forty thousand, I think that definitely would be a position.
Yeah, it'd be a full-time position.
With benefits, so, you know. The question is, is is it something we need to address? Uh, you know, the the answer may be no, we don't need to address it. The answer may be yes, that's money we need to, we need to recapture and and put back in instead of paying out. So. Uh, I guess at this point. We've had this on the agenda two times. So it's really, I think we need to give the staff some. Some city staff some direction on where we would like them to take this. I heard one councilman, Brent, he said, uh, let's let's bring it back up in November. Um, any other feedback?
I like that idea. That gives us a little bit more time to analyze it and also. Educate the the community on how much that's actually costing us.
Because I think what you're saying is there, it could be an unintended consequence of if we did.
Correct.
Add a fee, we could end up seeing just as much money. Being needed to be added on the other side.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, if we had to process, uh. Another seven-hundred-ish transactions at the window, that would be. That would be tough.
Now, while fifty-eight percent decided to just pay the fee, then it.
Then, no problem, yeah, no problem, yeah. And many people probably would.
Yeah, I mean, um, the way, the impression that I got from it was just, I mean, unfortunately, it's just. The way, you know, there's just fees and. Nobody likes the fees, but. We just get used to them and you know, yeah, yeah, unfortunately.
Okay. So is that, uh. Councilman McCarty, Councilman Wilkins, are you comfortable with that direction? That we would revisit this in November? Or is it your desire that we just table this and so that we think it needs to be brought back up again?
So waiting till November would just be, um, figuring out exactly, you know, pers-. Percentage-wise, um, just the cost and whatnot. Okay, yeah.
Yeah, we would be part of the whole utility, right? Utility rates in November every year.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's fair.
Okay.
You don't need a motion or anything.
No, we don't need a motion. This is just correction.
Yeah.
Because this is a discussion item.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, um. Next item up for discussion is our revisions to municipal policy seventy. Aquatic center admission policy, Mr. Styles.
So we've kind of taken on a project of going back through some of our municipal po- municipal policies, there's a hundred and one of them. Uh, we don't probably need to touch all one hundred and one of them, but there's some of them that are just sort of out of date. Um, and so we've got two tonight we're going to talk about. Uh, municipal policy seventy talks about the aquatic center emissions. Um, it's pretty out of date. Uh, we haven't been doing what's in the policy for about the last ten years and so. What the policy says that we don't have like different types of passes, uh, which we do. We have single passes, we have family passes, we. You know, caregiver passes, we have lots of different kind of categories. Um, we found that that works pretty well. Uh, and so we would want to amend this policy to reflect what we're actually doing. Uh, one of the things that came up last year when we talked about the golf course membership was should we give. Uh, similar discount to to, uh, employees for aquatics passes. Um, they sort of, it was something we we passed the golf thing and then it got kind of brought up as we were passing that. We never really came back to it. So. Coming back to it now, before we go to the work of adjusting policy seventy, we want to know if that's something you wanted to include with that. Um, just to give you an idea of what that would look like, a family pass right now is two hundred and ten dollars, single pass, one-ten. Lap swim pass, seventy-five, caregiver pass, forty. Uh, if you were to apply the same fifty percent discount, the max discount would be a hundred and five dollars. Uh, and just to kind of refresh your memory, you may not know what a golf membership costs, but it's, uh, four hundred and ninety-five. So the discount you get there is. Two hundred and forty-seven fifty. Uh, right now, I, just looking back at the passes, of course, this could change. Uh, we had about ten people, I think, that this would affect. So, you know, thinking about how much that is, you're basically deferring revenue of one thousand one hundred dollars. Uh, potentially if everybody had the same type of pass, uh. So we 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 always budget to generate about forty, forty-five, between forty and forty-five thousand and and membership and admission fees for the pool. Um, and so this is, this ends up being about two percent that you'd be foregoing with that. So. We're seeking a little bit of direction tonight. If you want us to include the discount for, uh, employees like we do with golf. Great, we'll do that. If not, great, we'll move on and we'll just revise the policy to to reflect what needs to be in there.
I liked the idea of giving it to the to the employees and I think the, your probably your biggest number is your volunteer firefighters and.
You have a lot of volunteer firefighters.
But it'd be great. I mean, it's another just.
Yeah, another benefit for them.
Yeah, benefit for them.
I like it too.
When you've been, uh, in the hiring process, does this get brought up in in, uh, any benefits discussion when you're. Looking at prospective employees?
We haven't hired anybody recently that gets benefits, but this would actually apply to the part-time people. So, no, but we would. Talk about.
I just think it'd be a good idea to make sure we, you know, when we're promoting. You know, employment with the city that we talk about all the benefits that that go along with that, so.
That's a good point. We haven't done that.
Any other questions? So beyond the, so are we just talking then, if we take action, are we just talking about making that change or is there?
Uh, no.
There's other changes that.
Yeah, we, yeah, we need to make changes to the actual policies. The question was, do we put that in there and so with that direct, if that's the direction, I will put that in there and bring the policy back.
Okay, is that acceptable?
Yep.
Okay, then that's, let's do that. Next item is, uh, discussion on revisions to municipal policy ninety-three. For electrical service disconnection, Mr. Styles.
Yeah, so we've got a, this one I gave you a red line copy on there so you can kind of see what the changes are. So what we've, we've kind of. Tinkered with this, uh. Over the last few years to get the policy where we really think like, feel like a good and fair to customers. Uh, we used to have the policy a couple of years ago was that the they could come out and do electrical disconnections at any time. Uh, that they were paying people in the field to reconnect them, which created a lot of problems we didn't want to deal with. Um, and so we've, we've made a few changes with this. The biggest change here is is there's some wording things that we need to make sure that we get right. Uh, make sure we give people the ten days following the fifteenth, uh, which is what we always want to do, if if not more. Um, and this, the the red letter or the red line here kind of reflects what what we think is what we actually do. Uh, the one change that would require an ordinance change here is, uh, we would like to split the fifty-dollar reconnect fee. Uh, between twenty-five and twenty-five, uh, twenty-five dollars to to get the red letter. Uh, and then twenty-five to reconnect. The thought there is that we have a lot of people who use their red letter as their reminder to pay, uh, and there's no, there's no financial. There's no financial incentive for them to do anything other than wait for that red letter to show up. Uh, by putting, you know, the twenty-five dollars on the red letter, then we've given them an incentive to to avoid the red letter. Um, you know, they're still, at the end of the day, they would still be paying the same fifty dollars that we we have in there now. We just want to split it differently. Yeah, effectively, but we still have to go through and do an ordinance change to reflect that. So. Um, in addition to the policy change, we would have to go back and do that if that was how you, if you would be okay with doing that. Uh, we're also just bringing that to you to discuss that. Is that something you would like us to do? Do you think it's a good idea, bad idea?
I think it's fine, personally. I mean, you know, losing any money, it's just. Yeah.
I think in the short term, we're actually, you'd probably see an increase because people wouldn't realize that they're getting the twenty-five dollars for that letter. Um, once they do, it may take them a few times to learn that that gets caused.
But your point is you don't want to have to do any fees. You'd rather just not have to do the.
I'd rather not have to do them at all, right? Like, that's what we ultimately want to get to.
Right.
And, you know, we're doing sometimes up to thirty of these in a month. Forty, fifty?
Forty.
Oh, forty, sorry, forty. Sometimes, and that's, that's, that's an awful lot.
Yeah, I mean, you know, having someone to go out there to deliver it and then.
Takes a lot of time.
Yeah, and if we can. You know, disincentivize waiting until. Um, what you said, until the service is actually turned off or?
So, yeah, they get the red letter and then they'll have twenty-four hours. Well, we go another day and then they have to pay it by then or come in and make a payment or even with us.
Okay.
Uh, if it gets disconnected, then they get the fifty-dollar fee.
Okay, I guess what I'm trying to say, so on top of having someone go and deliver the letter, then having someone take time out of the day to go out, disconnect the services. And then going back out to re- I I think if, you know. Disincentivizing, you know, to get the one red letter, oh, okay, I don't want the. Basically, what you're saying is, you know, people don't like the idea of. Paying just to get a letter and so it should theoretically decrease. You know, the man hour of having people go out there.
I would say previously we did have a fee in there and we changed this a couple of years ago. I think it's ten dollars or five dollars.
Five.
Five dollars for the fee.
Was there an, was there an increase in having more deliveries when, uh, you got rid of, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it was in twenty-twenty and we had that fee and switched that up, so. Yeah, I think we'd like to get it down and I would also note that this is not the only notice that they got. I mean, they get the, they get their regular bill, they get a delinquency notice. And then they get the ticket to this after after ten days. Um, so. You know, it's not the only notification you receive on that.
Any other questions? So would the council like to direct staff to bring this back at our next meeting for? For, uh, consideration?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
And next we have twenty-twenty-three in year in review, Mr. Styles.
So I've been kind of punting this one down the road a little bit. Uh, normally we kind of hit this in January, but we've had some pretty long agendas and so I. Kind of been slow walking it. Uh, I won't walk you through everything that happened in twenty-twenty-three. You can read and. And there's, there's quite a bit. Obviously, every year, it always blows my mind how much we actually do every year. Um, sort of the highlights for the year was is the amount of outside funding we got, two-point-four million in grants for comparable loans and outside. Outside of money. Uh, we did talk to our auditors, the auditors were in the, in the building today and we were talking to them. We're probably going to end up with a one, one audit. A single audit requirement for the federal government because we've hit the the limit for dollars brought in, uh, that would trigger a single audit. Uh, which is not fun, but it, you know, I'd rather get the money and deal with the audit than not have the money, so. Um.
Can that still be done by Al's Brown?
Yeah, they they have a specialist they actually bring in to do that, yeah. Yeah, so that's, uh, you know, that's something that's good. Um, that's a good problem to have, I guess, is what I would say. Uh, we finished up phase one of the community plaza, did a lot of work on that. Childcare center projects moving forward, had a lot of, uh, a lot of success last year and and kind of moving into this year, we're moving through our strategic priorities. We're going to revisit those, uh, here probably in March. Uh, you know, also, we obviously had quite a few things that were kind of challenges for us too. Um. You know, we had some, we had some businesses that had to close, the building center, pickup line, mom sees Harrington Hospital Clinic. Um, you know, we still had high prices and inflation. That was kind of the story of twenty-two and that persisted and there's still some issues with some of that. Uh, and then, of course, we had, uh, Laura Stalky, who was the mayor for twenty-eight years, passed away, Larry Payne, administrator for thirteen years, passed away, very close to one another. Uh, unfortunately, we didn't finish the splash park on on. Quite in time for Larry to to get to be there for that and which is, which is sad, a little bittersweet there. Um, but we we have honored them and we'll actually have the signs, uh, up for that before they open this year, been told. So, yeah, um, if you had any questions about anything specific that happened in there, I, you know, overall operationally, I think we're moving along pretty well. Uh, like I say, we had the audit today. I think that's going to come out pretty well. We've got a few things to adjust, but. Uh, making progress and so I felt pretty good about that and I would answer any questions you may have about any of the things that we did in twenty-twenty-three.
Yeah, it's like you said, I went and scrolled through this last night. I couldn't believe how much we got done with.
Oh, yeah.
That's great.
The other questions, comments? Okay, thank you for compiling that, Danielle and Matt. Appreciate it because I'm sure you both had a hand in that, I'm guessing.
Yep.
So, thank you. Next up is the, uh, city administrators report.
Thank you, sir. Uh, I wanted to attach the mayor's, uh, testimony. We provided written testimony and I provided verbal testimony. On Senate Bill four thirteen on Valentine's Day, uh, Father Capeon. Uh, it's a bill that would authorize them to build a memorial of him on, in the Capitol on Topeka. Uh, no, no, no money goes into that. That's tax dollar money. It's all going to be privately raised. They should have zero problems raising that money. Um, I would just draw your, draw your attention to loose testimony on that. It was far more eloquent than my verbal testimony was. I thought, yeah, uh, and I also want to thank Commissioner David Mueller for giving testimony. He can't, he went to Topeka and did it. I did it over Webex, so. Um, a lot of support here in Marion County, obviously, uh, Father Capeon's a Marion County. A native and so want to show our support for that and. If you don't know the story, the story, you should definitely, there's some excellent books out there on it. You should definitely check that out. Uh, planning commission, just want to let you know that the planning commission is going to hear five cases next week, uh, for alternative housing overlays for container homes. Uh, one of them is a single-family home and to the west of the one that they were planning on building. And then four other ones are duplexes, which are completely new floor plans from what we've seen. Uh, so we're, we're going through those. Uh, yeah, there, there's some, there's some things that are going to have to happen with these. Um, and of course, the planning commission is is pretty. Hesitant to approve moving forward with any, any more of them without seeing one of them completed. I think that's probably justified. Uh, there's definitely some infrastructure things that are going to have to happen too because there's not electrical service to a couple of those lots. Uh, and there's an issue with fire hydrants. There needs to be a fire hydrant added. I don't know if you know how much, fire hydrant's about thirteen thousand dollars. That's just for the equipment to do it. Uh, that's not the staff time to put it in, so. Um, you know, there's obviously some development costs that are going to be happening there too, so we're going to see how that works out. But I wanted to make you aware that we're having these conversations at the planning commission level. Uh, hiring, pleased to announce we filled the assistant city administrator position, assistant to the city administrator position, Callie Arnold. She's a native here to Hill LeBrow and a recent Bethany College graduate. She's taken on that position. She started yesterday. Uh, she's, she's got a really strong background in English. She's an English major. Uh, and has been doing a lot of, already on the ground, doing some research for us on, um. On the, uh, reliable public power provider program and a G grant that we've got work, got her working on, so excited to have her. Uh, our water and sewer position's being filled. We actually have an internal transfer, Aiden Brammer, who's, uh, been at the street department. Has moved over into the water sewer department, which is, I think will be a good fit for him. Uh, but that means we're short now in the water or on the street side, so we're going to go back out and try to fill that street position. Um, fire district meeting, we had, uh, Ben and I met with the township partners, so we're. Uh, partners with Lehigh Township, Rizley Township, Minno Township, nine, nine sections of Minno Township. Uh, Liberty Township and the city of Lehigh. We have contractual service. We provide them. Uh, we try to meet with them at least once a year. We have to meet with them once a year. We try to meet twice. Um, basically the, the, the take home there was that they all understood that the price has gone up. Uh, we have a five mil cap in our agreements, which is, uh, similar to, consistent with the statute for fire districts. So there's not really much we're going to do to change the agreements. They just now are aware that everything's going to be at that, five mil level for them, uh, coming in. And I would, if you, if you have some more questions about, I would be happy to explain kind of how that arrangement works. It's a little bit complicated, but I can, walk you through that on the side or we can even bring it to a meeting if you want to, to learn more about it. Uh, health, health insurance savings report, uh, got that for January here. We saved six, six thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars for the month. Thirty-one thousand, five hundred and eighty-five for the plan year. Uh, that runs through June. We have kind of an oddball, um, year. We don't do a calendar year on that. Our reserve fund balance, which is money in the bank to pay those claims, that is, is our money. Uh, that otherwise would have went to Blue Cross and Blue Shield is a hundred and one thousand, seven sixteen. So it's doing pretty well there. Uh, January, January financial reports are attached there. Uh, Danielle put those together for us. I feel like we're in a pretty good position. It's always really hard to tell our financial position early in the year because we have, our, where our money comes in, we have a lot that comes in at the beginning of the year. My password comes up there. Don't want to get in my master pass. Um, and so it's really kind of hard to say, yeah, we're in great financial position because the numbers look awesome at the beginning of the year, but our, our, uh, expenditures kind of come in the summertime and they don't always match up. So we'll start doing a dashboard, uh, report once it makes more sense to do that. Probably out of the first quarter. Uh, and then I will be out of the office starting tomorrow for the rest of the week. So if you need anything, call Danielle. That's it. That's all I got, sir.
Any questions? Okay, hearing none, we'll move into our final opportunity for public comment. Is there anybody that would like to address the council? Hearing none, we'll move, uh, on to council comments. Councilman By.
Nothing tonight, sir.
Councilman McCarty?
Nothing.
Councilman Wilkins?
I would just like to, thank the people that participated and when I went around asking them questions and, overall people were pretty receptive, so that was nice. Got no door slammed in my face, so.
Well, you did a really nice job and, you know, kind of above and beyond. So you're starting to raise the bar a little. Councilman Driggers?
Nothing tonight.
All right. Is there any other business that needs to come before the council? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.